And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah, if you please call the rule.
Mayor Thule.
Here.
Councillor Sillie.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Councillor Stevenson.
Here.
Councillor Trim.
Here.
Councillor Weaver.
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. And we have one presentation tonight, and that is from the Chair of the Augsburg Land Bank Corporation, Jim Morrison.
Good evening, Mayor Thule and members of Management Council. I am Jim Morrison. I am currently the Chairperson of the Augsburg Land Bank Committee. I know that we have some new members from the presentation from last year. So I will just, if you don't mind, do a brief background. The land bank was formed in 2018 in accordance with New York State Article 16. The purpose of that was to provide foreclosing governmental units with the ability to establish a land bank as a tool to facilitate the return of vacant, abandoned, and tax delinquent properties to productive use. The focus of this really is largely the elimination of harm and liability that these properties can sometimes cause. Since 2018, the land bank has acquired over 28 properties, or acquired 28 properties. We have returned over $1.1 million in assessed value property back to the city's tax rolls. We have completed two brand-new construction projects, both of which have been sold. Three rehabs, all of which have been also sold to owner-occupied, as owner-occupied units, and one partial rehab, which we also sold. We've demolished 15 properties. We have four, prior to '24, we have four more that are on the schedule. In fact, it might be happening as we speak. They're in town demolishing a couple of the ones that we've contracted for. When those properties are demolished, a lot of times the land that remains is not big enough to be a buildable lot, so we turn them into what we call side lots. We have a side lot program where neighbors, most notably directly around that property, will have the opportunity to buy that to expand their own footprint. And we have sold 10 of those side lots since our inception, and we have a total of seven left that are ultimately for sale. We will be, as soon as we complete the four that are being demolished, we will, there will be letters going out to all the neighbors, all the people within a certain radius that will have the opportunity to bid on those. The purpose of this tonight is a '23 review, so I'm kind of focusing now on just the year of '23. I know you each have a presentation packet that was provided. If questions come up, I'm certainly not going to read through that entire thing, but if questions come up, or anybody has any questions either now or at a late, now I can answer at a later date. I'd be happy to come back if that would please you to answer some of those questions. In 2023, our, some of our highlights, we secured about $210,000 in funding from Phase 2 of a grant from the New York State Homes and Community Renewal. We, that allowed us to acquire some property, as well as set up the demolition of the four properties I spoke about. And ultimately, then, we are going to rehab the two buildings that we, two other properties that we acquired. Those two properties are on Knox Street and South Water Street, and those are slated for renovations this coming year. We have a couple more that, again, as we have determined, have been identified to be demolished. And again, I think some of those are, one I know has already happened. We have a couple more that are, that are on the schedule. And then in November of '23, the second of our original construction properties, which we did as a joint effort with BOSI's, was sold, the one on Berry Street. We had previously sold one on Urban Street. So we have sold both of those properties that we, that was under that arrangement with BOSI's, which was very, I think, a very successful endeavor. So our, currently, our inventory sits at, will be seven, I'm sorry, seven, just double-check that for sure. Seven side lots. We have three, what we call buildable lots in our inventory. They are on Moore Street, Rensler Ave. And Andrea, help me with the third one. Where's the third one at?
New York Avenue.
New York Avenue. And so those we would like to, we maintain in our bank because we aggressively will be seeking funding to try to get something put on those properties. As of right now, there's not something scheduled, but because they're buildable lots, we did not want to lose those. We wanted to keep those in our inventory, and so we've done that. We have two rehabs, as I mentioned, that will be starting this summer. Hopefully, those will be, you know, up for sale by the end of '24 or shortly thereafter. All this is under the Phase 2 of that grant funding. Challenges, our biggest challenge, as you well can imagine, and I'm sure you folks hear it a lot, is funding. You know, we had the original funding that came from New York State when this program was created, and we have had, you know, little bits of, some pieces of funding through some, well, this grant was a very nice one, but other than that, you know, it's not been anything that's been really for us to be able to kind of bank on and to say, we know this is going to happen. So funding that would be more predictable has eluded us. However, we are aware that through some lobbying efforts, New York State has a land bank association, which of all the land banks in New York State, we of course are one of many, the smallest one, if I'm not mistaken. But ultimately, there is language that we hope is going to yield some funding perspective in the New York State budget. So we're kind of, we'll be paying close attention to when that drops, and all that wording is final so that we can possibly look at, you know, a little bit more sustainable method for which we can continue to bring some funding in to do these projects and to acquire more projects. Our relationship with the city of Augsburg has always been very good. You folks have helped us on numerous occasions, acquire, pretty much all the occasions, acquire those properties that I mentioned earlier, going back to 2018. A little bit of a curveball as we move forward in that the county is now the foreclosing unit for those properties that reached that point. We have not had a meeting with them yet regarding how that will work. We're hopeful that they will see, as we've always felt, that this is just a really, really great and win-win program for the city and that the county would want to participate wherever possible with us in the properties that would ultimately reach the point where you folks have been able to get them to us in the past. Now it's going to be a little different, and we're just still trying to work our way through that. So that's kind of a look at, you know, what we accomplished in '23, what we have on the docket for '24, and ultimately beyond. I mean, obviously, funding is really our main, you know, kind of hurdle to overcome in terms of being able to predict a little bit more and to work a little bit more with some of these buildable lots that we have if we really want to put, whether it's with another BOSI's program or some other type of construction to get properties on there. But, you know, I think we're very proud of the fact that we've returned the number of, the amount of money to the city tax rolls that we have. I think it's a successful program, and certainly my hope that it will continue well into the future. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
All right, Jim, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Just one, through the reading of the, your annual report here, your summary of it. 427 Moore Street, we have a pending grant?
No, that's been owned by the land bank since March of 2019. That was one of the first properties transferred to the land bank by the city.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you. It's, I think it's a wonderful program for the city.
Thank you.
There's not a whole lot of communities that have this, is there?
Twenty-five.
Twenty. But a lot of them are, most of them are countywide. I mean, we're one of the very few that's as, you know, small as, like, to a city. So in some ways, it kind of, you know, makes the program a little bit smaller, but also allows us to do more. You know, I mean, anything gets countywide, you're obviously probably running into a lot more, you know, kind of hurdles to get over to get stuff done. So it's nice that this one is just city-based, but yes, there are 25.
It's just perfect for this community. You know, so much of the housing stock needed to be torn down, rehabbing sellers, giving them on tax rolls. It's been blessed.
Thank you. I appreciate you looking at it that way. We certainly feel that way as well. But I should mention as well that all the board members, it's a volunteer board. There's nobody, you know, we are all volunteers and feel very strongly about, you know, trying to keep this for the city and keep it as successful as it's been.
Jim, just a couple things for me. First, it's nice to see the continuing partnership between land bank and the students at BOSI's.
Yeah.
It's just such a win-win situation for both entities, so I thank you for continuing that. Just one question. On page four, when you mentioned the meeting, the housing value of One Rock United Homes in Augsburg, eighty-one thousand five hundred. Is that before the city-wide property evaluation last year or after?
This takes into account the current, it's a reflection of the current census data. So it's probably a year behind the actual assessment data.
Just to ask the question.
So, but that would be, that would be the sales price, though, based on not the assessed value, wouldn't it?
That.
Eighty-one five would be the, would be based on assessed value, would it? Would it be based on the sales price that comes from the sales data from the valley?
That's, that is according to the American Community Survey. That's the language that they use. That an assessed value would be based on our rules, not sales.
Right.
And then, and then again, I think we both know that the land bank is going to continue to play an important role in helping the city improve its housing stock with housing being such a key initiative with Governor Hokel. So, yeah, anything that the city can do in partnership with you to find other sources of funding in support of your program, we're certainly willing to reach out to do that. And again, thanks to you and your committee for the excellent work that you do.
Thank you very much. As I know, you know, you're the interim city manager, is also our executive director, and I would just have to tell you, we would be, we would not get very far without Andrea's help and her input. So my thanks to her for wearing that hat amongst the other ones that she wears. Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Yeah, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have one proclamation this evening, which I will read. Whereas April 11th, 2024, marks the 56th anniversary of the Federal Housing Act of 1968, which prohibits discrimination in housing because of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, handicap, and familial status. And whereas New York State additionally prohibits discrimination because of creed, age, sexual orientation, marital status, or military status. And whereas fair housing is a positive community good. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and the St. Lawrence County Board of Realtors, and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve their clients, customers, and communities. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Therefore, I, Michael Thule, Mayor of the City of Augsburg, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month. Now therefore, I, Michael Thule, do hereby support citywide fair housing activity, and I urge all citizens, brokers, landlords, and bankers to rededicate themselves to ensuring that fair housing laws are always upheld and citizens are protected against discrimination. In witness whereof, I adhere on to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed. And while I'm signing these, I will invite Councillor Stevenson to share some comments about this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Thule. For those of you who are not aware, I am a past president of the St. Lawrence County Board of Realtors, past president of the New York State Association of Realtors, and I serve at the National Association of Realtors level. I was the 2022 Fair Housing Policy Chair for the National Association of Realtors, so this is near and dear to my heart, and that's why I always ask on behalf of the St. Lawrence County Board of Realtors to accept this. Some of the battles we still face are discrimination in appraisals, appraisal bias. Secretary Marcia Fudge of HUD has been working diligently on this, as have, as have the National Association Fair Housing Policy Committee. Some of the things I'm very proud, when I travel throughout the nation on behalf of fair housing and the National Association of Realtors, is how proactive we are locally. For a smaller upstate rural community, we don't give ourselves enough credit. When I was working on special credit purpose programs, I could use examples right from Augsburg, New York, that we've been using for 15 years, that were new to other people. When I talk about our proclamation that we've been doing over a decade, I would say, that's unique to some of the other communities. So I thank our municipality, I thank all of you for endeavoring with fair housing and supporting that, and I am very thankful to accept this proclamation, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. All right, tonight, we have two public hearings. The first is regarding a local law to amend Section 181-1 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled "Collection of Yard Waste." It is going to be Bill Number 19, and I will open that public hearing now. So if anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium, and you will have five minutes to speak. If anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, and you will have five minutes to speak.
The first individual is registered as Greg McAmara, and I will unmute that individual now. Here's you are self-muted, sir. Mr. McAmara.
Can the chamber hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I would just like to call in as far as this public hearing goes and give my opinion, as I normally do. To charge citizens or contractors or anyone hauling debris from inside the city limits to the dump is, is nothing but a slap in the face to everyone who voted everyone who's in. That shouldn't have never happened, and for what's, what's on the internet right now for the draft? It says it's a draft for the fees. It says under a certain amount, under six yards is $50, and over six is $100. So if a guy does a job as a contractor, and let me just try to explain it to you this way. If I had a 10-wheeler dump truck, it can hold 24 yards of that type of debris. So if I was to bring it there, and it's over six, it would be $100. What about the little guy who does a small job for someone? This is not proportionate. You got to think about that. And most dumps use scales and other forms of, just different ways to charge people, dumps that do charge. My family has a camp in South Colton, New York, and Colton has a dump that's free for trash, for everything. It's free for all the citizens. I know that would never happen here. But to take something that's gone on forever and then try to apply a charge to it, that's not going to solve the problem that Shane brought to you at the last meeting either. The problem that he stated is that the debris keeps piling up. And he also stated he was scared that the DEC would shut the city, or the dump down, not the city, excuse me. I reached out to the DEC, and they were very nice. They weren't like how the cities treated me in the past. Whenever I tried to get information, they didn't tell me to foil it and wait, who knows, God knows how long, to get the information. The lady was very informative that deals with the dump here. And I think yous all should know, she said there's three acres allowed of pileup or dump area. I don't know how much is full. That's something that should be considered. And she also said to me, I've told every municipality or dump, like, that's been experiencing this issue since they closed down the biomass plant at Fort Drum, that they need to get a chipper and chip all this stuff, and it reduces it down to almost nothing. Now that's what dumps do. They process what comes in. Augsburg needs to get a chipper. If you looked online on Marketplace, there's chippers for sale all over the place from $10,000 up to what Shane stated at 250. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand's a very big machine. I don't know if we need one that big. And the woman from the DEC also stated to me that there's a grant, and because that's considered recycling, it has to do with recycling. New York State would cover half of the cost of a brand-new chipper for the city of Augsburg. She said all that simply needs to be done is to just apply, apply for the grant, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAmara. Anybody else? Kathy?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, therefore, I declare this public hearing closed. Our next public hearing is regarding the submission of Round Eight Restore New York Communities Initiative applications. There will be two bills, Bill Number 26 and Bill Number 27, and I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium, and you will have five minutes to speak.
Just have a quick question. Were these the only two applicants for these grants? Is this the only two projects?
To my knowledge, yes.
So there was no other?
No other.
Okay, thanks.
Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, and you will have five minutes to speak.
The first individual is registered as Greg McAmara, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir.
Hi, I just wanted to put my two cents in here, too. I think that, to bounce back off the last speaker, I am shocked that we only had two submissions for $10 million worth of stuff. I looked on the website for that grant. It actually said that this could be used, this money could be used towards residential repairs and fixes, too, not just like commercial ones. To my understanding, I could be wrong. I don't ever remember that being brought forth to the public. I bet you it would have been flooded with applicants. Also, I think of like the Spurling Building, other places in Augsburg perhaps where, I don't know if we reached out to these people or not, or if they knew, the owners knew that this money was available, but I think it could have been just spread out a lot more evenly and fairly. And I would say if I was working at a committee that would decide what communities are rewarded this grant, I would look at the two applicants that we have, and one of them was only asking for under $200,000 of $10 million. And they, I know they didn't have to have their final submissions, and they have to make to do that, but they actually itemized what they were spending the money on. And then the other applicant asked for $9 million and didn't provide any information. Now, if I was sitting on a board to decide if Augsburg's going to get money for this or get rewarded this grant, I would be like, oh my God, like, what the hell is going on, guys? Like, this is pretty vague information here, and I know there's big corporations involved, and some type of places like to keep everything quiet, but the citizens want to know what's going on, too. And you always got to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
So I declare this public hearing closed. We now move on to personal appearances. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, and you will have five minutes. If anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Kathy. So that brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. That the claim says enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 6-2024 in the amount of $542,369.05, and Library Warrant Number 6-2024 in the amount of $0, and Capital Fund Warrant Number 6-2024 in the amount of $11,835.57, and Community Development Fund Warrant Number 6-2024 in the amount of $0, and Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 6-2024 in the amount of $0, as audited, be in the same hereby our ordered paid ISO.
Second.
Would the clerk please call the rule?
Mayor Thule.
Yes.
Councillor Sillie.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Approved.
Do I have any appointments tonight? So that brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A local law to amend 181-1 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled "Collection of Yard Waste."
Would someone care to introduce this?
I'll move that. If you could just highlight some of the specifics.
Thank you for the second. Okay. So, yeah, so again, Shane, if you'd like some of the changes that have been proposed.
Yep, so the changes in the beginning part for spring collection, we're asking for it not to be placed out any earlier than Sunday, May 1st, as weather permits, the Sunday before May 1st, I'm sorry. In that way, there will be, we're asking there to be penalties if it's placed out late or after the timeframe or before. We're eliminating the summer pickup. That is due to manpower issues with paving. It really hinders our paving. So we, because we try to pave there that part of July, the time it works out in the fall. The same thing is when placing it out and picking it up, there will be penalties if it's placed out afterwards or beforehand. It also states when the storm comes, it may be picked up, and the drop-off will be open from April 1st to December 1st, man. And then in the back, there is, there's a fee structure which resembles our fee structure for overgrown grass and weeds and snow violations.
Anyone else on council?
Your Honor, I've had a few people reach out to me with some concerns. One of them being no earlier than before May 1st. With our changing weather patterns, I know for myself, my fellow has already been at my office and has already raked it, and I'm in violation right now under this new proposed change. I think that, I understand in the fall not putting it out too soon because it will blow in the street and everything will get cumbersome and it will violate our own rule and the New York State law of not putting things in the roadway. But I think that we have to look at changing weather patterns and being able to get the work done when we can. By May 1st, if we have a very warm April, half the yards of grass will be dead before they can even rake it and put it someplace. So I think we need to reevaluate that date as far as May 1st. And I also think that it's very cumbersome for the citizens. They don't understand the pickup. They don't understand the first Sunday of this and that. It's just very cumbersome. I understand why we do it that way, so that DPW can start out on Monday, and it's not out in a long time prior to that. But perhaps we could just make it easier for the citizens, and I'm just throwing these dates out, not saying they're, I'm proposing them, but I think it would be easier if we said, no, don't place anything out before March 15th, and it has to be out before, I don't know, May 30, 31st or something. And then the same thing for the fall. I think people like those dates. It's much easier than trying to go back to which is the first Sunday after this, after that. It would be clearer for that.
When we do, interrupt you, but when we do place it out on the internet, you know, and stuff like that, we do put the date on there.
But I think people like that just don't wait. Unfortunately, not everybody goes to the internet. It's, I get, I used to get called when I was on council before. I still get calls, people asking, asking. They just, they're not always familiar with that. I think maybe if we consider putting the dates out there, then DPW can still work with the same structure they want to. And it would be only a matter of a few days before the Sunday. I think in many cases, that would be easier. And then the other concern is there will be no penalty, I'm sorry. And then the other concern is there will be no penalty, I'm sorry. Right ahead of no, what happens with the, with the related storm debris? So if it happens on a Saturday, they can't call anybody to see if that's going to be an allowable pickup because of the storm. So I think that we need to be careful about that, too, because if we're going to find somebody, we have to be careful about putting it out. How are they going to find out if it's an okay storm? Are we gonna, are we gonna notify people on Saturdays and Sundays? Yeah, you can clean up your yard and put it on the curb. How has it been done in the past?
Storms are usually done on a case-by-case basis. If there's a storm or someone has debris, they will call us, and then that's where we'll go pick it up. We don't do the whole city on storm occasions. So I think, I mean, if there was a storm, I don't.
It'll be unlikely.
We're not going to run out looking for someone.
Okay. I just.
That isn't really the intent of it. The intent of it is, a lot of, just as much as people are frustrated that we're putting this in place, there are just as many people that want it placed because some people's neighbors leave piles of grass there all summer long, so if they open their windows, they smell it.
I.
Call, too, so it's, you know, it goes both ways.
And I understand that part completely. I'm very fine with everything else. I, you know, I understand the reasoning for between the curb and the street, just those couple of items right there.
What would you like to see for dates?
I think dates would be easier for people to understand, and I am concerned with putting that May first date if we have a warm April for people having to wait for that.
I agree with you, Jen. I think, I think, I think May first maybe a little bit late. People, people want to get out. I see a lot of people already doing it. And, you know, maybe March is a little early, but something, something like April, April first or whatever might, might work better. I'd like to see a date change as well. As far as the early season goes, and I agree with you there, the rest of it looks pretty good. But, but I, you know, I don't want to charge somebody a hundred dollars because they cleaned up the yard, and, you know.
That's not really.
And I don't think, I don't think we're out to do that, right? The intention isn't, isn't to do that, but the intention is to try and keep a nice, neat city, right? But I'd like to see a different date change there. I mean, we could amend it right now if you want it.
Anybody else on counsel?
I have concerns with the last paragraph addition, adding the fees and the penalties into this particular motion. I think they would be better served to be included in the next motion where the city council sets those fees. I also have a concern as to how the actual cost of removal is determined, what formula is used to do that. And I believe that a hundred dollar civil penalty for the first violation is at least two times more than it ought to be. I don't disagree with having a penalty, but I think a hundred bucks the first time somebody messes up or doesn't, isn't aware of what's going on is pretty steep. Can you fill me in on how actual cost of removal is determined?
It's based off New York State equipment rate, so we charge for our equipment and burden rate of the manpower. And we bill down to, I think it's the increment of fifteen minutes. So if it takes us fifteen minutes or half an hour, we don't just go out and hammer them with, you know, a minimum of two hours.
I'm a little concerned with that because I watch this process proceed on my street when there's three trucks and a payloader and four guys and it's a landlord getting paid, getting charged for all of that, or is he getting charged for the time of one payloader, one truck, one guy?
Well, if we were going to pick up a violation, we'd only send one payloader and one dump truck, guide the guys to do it. Just enough to get it done. We wouldn't send it out like we would pick an up brush through the city.
And can you give me an approximate cost of what that would be for a one-time pickup that took fifteen minutes on site? And are we talking on site? Are we talking from the time they leave the DPW until they return to the DPW?
The time they leave, the time they return.
Awful excessive to me. I'm sorry.
I agree with you, Storm. It's a high, it's a high number for this community.
It's the same thing that's in, like I said, that's the same structure that's in for weed violations and snow violations.
I also feel that those fees are a little excessive, but those were set by me, so.
I'm sorry, Storm.
No, I'm done.
Couple of things. One, as far as the spring and the fall pickup, what would be the difference if you had a fall storm as well, you know, as far as, you know, moving the dates as far as the spring and the fall? I tend to agree with both Counselor Stevenson and Selly. The fees, but I, I, you know, Storm and I live on the same street, and I believe what he was referring to might have been the winter cleanup from a lot of the, a lot of what was coming. And usually you have one truck, you fill that truck up, the truck pulls off, another comes in its place, so it's kind of a rolling, rolling aspect. But this is going to be tough to swallow for some of the citizens. I'm not so much opposed to the, I am a bit opposed to the fee schedule. I do find it steep, but I also don't want to cut your equipment rating and, and, and what, what needs to be done here. And I'm wondering also how well, you know, we don't have a local newspaper, right? We have a journal that comes out every Thursday. It's unfortunate, but it just happens to be the case. And our official newspaper, we don't have that media aspect to inform the citizens so much anymore as to these pickups, and that used to be vital. You know, it was, it was a good component for us, and I know that we put it on the website, and we have a Facebook page. I don't know how often it gets updated and surely not looking to put more on you, Andrea. But with that being said, you know, I think, I think being able to get this out quicker would help alleviate a lot of what we get back from a lot of people. The biggest concerns I get from citizens, and this has really nothing to do with the, with this resolution or the next one, but it's what the citizens get back for the taxes they pay. And that, and that's what I've been hearing it ever since I've been up here. And, and it's hard to respond to that, but also it's a kind of a sticky situation in the same spot. So I don't, I don't know, better advertising, getting it out more, you know, out to the public a little bit more, and maybe slowly, gradually working into a fee structure, a higher fee structure along the way. You know, so that we can keep the public informed as well as best that we can in a difficult situation.
In the past, we have included them in the water, sewer, first water, sewer bills, a little flyer, like when it was going to be, that was when the controller's office was fully staffed, so I don't want to put it.
We do.
I just want to be honest with that.
We do that. They, and they are available at the controller window. They're right there right now with our current schedule. And the Facebook page, both the city page and the recreation page are updated pretty regularly.
I haven't, I was going to.
Based on what's going on.
Haven't looked at it in a while.
Your Honor, if everyone else has had an opportunity, I'd like to speak about the fee structure.
Please, yeah.
So I understand the concern and feeling that it's steep, but when you think about it, if you had to hire a contractor to come with a dump truck and with a front-end loader and come from their place of business to your business or to your place that you're going to have the pickup done and then brought back, you'd be very fair and lucky if you could get it for that fee. Secondly, unfortunately, majority of the citizens are wonderful, and they just want to clean their yards, and they just want to have their brush picked up. And it's really well-intended, but there are some people that just ignore that because the fee that we charge is so low that it's cheaper to have us do it than it is to have a private contractor come in and do it, and that is twofold bad. It's bad for the city because we can't afford it anymore. And number two, they're not hiring private contractors that make their living from this because we can undercut their costs because of a low fee structure. So I just ask us to consider that when we're making our decision.
I will say that we, the fees for, that Shane mentioned, and we've mentioned being sort of mirrored here, the penalty structure, we increased them about two years ago because we found just that. People were telling us like, well, you know, I'm going to be gone for a long weekend in the winter, and if it snows, I'm going to get that violation, and I'm going to pay you to do it because I don't want to hire a contractor, have somebody on call, like it costs me more. And we heard the same thing about grass, so we have increased our fees, and we see less violations. The first year we implemented those fees, we had a lot of complaints, and, but we are seeing fewer this year. More people are complying because they don't want to pay the fee. It's cheaper to make sure that you have a contractor do it or you do it yourself, so. That really is the intent of these fees is to be a disincentive. We really don't have the ability to shovel sidewalks and mow grass. And so that's why this fee structure is being proposed here as well.
Would somebody get a letter first?
Yeah, and they get, same, I think it's five days, a letter and five days to comply. If, you know, they had a reasonable issue why they couldn't get done on the five days, the coach office are usually pretty good with extended form.
I'll repeat my statement of last month that with the current statutes of our postal service, five days, about ninety percent of the time, it's not going to get delivered. I also would like to piggyback and I agree with Mr. McNamara that the fee needs to be much higher for large loads. You know, in addition to, you know, you've got it broken down into two levels. I'm thinking maybe three, four, five levels, depending on the size of the vehicle.
That's the next.
Might be more appropriate. And I also have nothing against the penalties for the second or third violations. I just feel the first one ought to be about half of what the hundred dollars for the first time, because I think that more often than not, that first one is going to be inadvertent. I also question the cost, actual cost for a truck and manpower, and if we stay with a hundred dollar civil penalty, I don't think there's many citizens are going to get out of that for less than three hundred, four hundred dollars if you're actually going with manpower costs, equipment costs, et cetera. If you have two vehicles, man, from the, and from the time they leave the DPW until they return to the DPW, we're talking an hour. We're not talking a fifteen-minute job.
So do you want to amend this?
I will make a motion. Number one, I'm going to vote against this unless these fee schedules are moved to the next amendment. And I'll make a motion to that effect that we move that last paragraph to the next bill setting the fees for these services.
But I think if you, if you look at the city code.
Before, before we discuss this, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right, no second, so that considered. Right, based on the, based on the comments that have been made, I will offer a motion to revise Paragraph A, Section one, removing, but no earlier than the Sunday before May first, and replacing it with as soon as weather permits, beginning April first. Is there a second to that resolution?
Second. I'm sorry, could you?
So we're, because it seemed like the majority of the council, at least, about, wanted to see May first, and wanted the state specific. My suggestion is that the start date would be April first, and then collection will start no later than April first of each year.
Yeah, I second that.
Any other discussion?
Are we going to leave, are we going to leave the end date the same?
I think so.
We're going to have DPW for two months, I can't. You're looking to keep it till Memorial Day? Yes. So we'd have brush pickup for two months?
No, it's still states a little bit lower states that we won't start to.
Till May, right.
It's just people could put it out if they needed to.
On April one.
On April one.
Many people, if you consider snowbirds and things like that, may not come back in April, want to do it in May. I think picking it up in May is still good. But the only problem that I had was, was penalizing people for putting it out in April, and so I think the April first is good. As far as the fee structure, I think the best point you made, Storm, was that the first, the first time somebody makes a mistake, it's probably inadvertent. And so we have one amendment for the, for the date, April first. Do you want to make an amendment to change that hundred dollars to something else?
I will do that as soon as we vote on the first.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
So just to be clear for the record, is council's intention to do the amendments in individual motions?
Yes.
So I understand. Okay. So this would be to amend as indicated by Mayor Tully. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampereley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
And now we approved it, and now we have to vote as amended, or do you want to do as amended at the end, Mayor?
We need to see if there's any other revision to be proposed.
I would like to move to amend the civil penalty for the first violation from one hundred dollars to fifty dollars.
I second. I have a question. I'm sorry. I have a question concerning that. So trying not to make this a clerical nightmare. If I make a mistake in 2024, then I start over in 2025 with another mistake and the lower penalty because there's no way this can be tracked. And so that would be my concern is that we can't do that, so. It's the same thing. It's going to happen every single, you know, every single year.
They, the fees do restart every year.
Right.
For all of our violations.
Right.
So it'd be, so it'd be an annual, be an annual violation if that were the case, right? We're not looking at progressively finding people along the way over a course, a period of time.
Well, we can look at it this year and see how it works, and if it's, if it's abused, then we can look at a higher structure next time.
That's what I was going to ask. Are you concerned that people will do the fifty dollar this year, then next year they'll just say, well, that's a cheap way out, and they'll do it again?
And again, ninety-five percent of the people are not going to do that. They're going to just really try to follow the rules.
So maybe decide something where we, we keep track if we, like.
Well, let's look at, yeah, let's look and see how many violations were put out and many repeat offenders and then go from there.
The proposal I'm looking at, I don't believe stipulates this is an annual thing. Is there a reason it can't be tracked from year to year?
That, so just, I just was wanting to convey to council that the violations for snow, for grass and weeds, those restart every year. So it's, you only get the second violation fee, the third violation fee, if it's within the same season.
Okay.
And we have found that to work. I mean, we have very few that seem to abuse it now that we've adopted that schedule.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Kathy, would you please call the roll? This is on to amend the, the first civil penalty from one hundred dollars to fifty dollars.
Yes. Counselor Scampereley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Any other discussion or further resolutions to the motion as amended?
I just have one. I'm going to support the, the, the motion. By moving it to April first, it's just, to me, it, it allows the opportunity to have that curbside if not picked up by May first or May fifteenth or wherever the case may be, additional opportunity would be strewn about elsewhere. That's my only concern. But I, but I understand the dates and I'll digress back to my concerns about trying to inform the, the community as much as we can as far as this, this, this resolution and collection of yard waste.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, I just may ask Shane something. So Shane, if, if you find that you're having a nice spring and you're not doing as much snow removal, ice and things, there's nothing to say that you wouldn't start the pickup sooner if you saw that the majority of the city had things out.
No, we do, we do now. Yeah, if it's like a rainy day, we send people out in the fall, rainy days, and we'll do the same thing in the spring.
Okay.
Okay, good. Well, that's put to me in the morning.
Better we can get it off the street, easier work for us.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Kathy, I was going to call the roll on the motion as amended.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampereley?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by. Our next item of business will also be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution establishing new fees for the municipal landfill clearing debris landfill. Whereas the city of Augsburg operates a municipal land clearing debris landfill for the disposal of grass, clippings, leaves, and brush. Whereas a supplement to the city's brush pickup program residents are able to dispose of yard waste at the land clearing debris landfill at no cost, including tree limbs up to six inches in diameter and six feet in length. Whereas the city of Augsburg desires to establish fees to regulate use of the landfill by contractors and for those disposing of oversized limbs. And whereas oversized limbs are those in excess of six inches in diameter and over six feet in length. Now, what they're, now therefore be it resolved that after a review of the rate scheduled by staff, the Augsburg City Council hereby establishes fees for the land clearing debris landfill as follows. Oversized limbs and contractors, less than six cubic yards pickup or a small residential trailer, fifty dollars a load, more than six cubic yards, a hundred dollars a load. And be it further resolved that these fees will be reviewed annually as part of the budget process.
Someone care to introduce this motion?
I'll introduce it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Um, again, in response to what some of the McNamara talked about, I think he's correct that we need to increase the, or have another level of fees there. You know, somebody comes in with a small dump truck for a hundred dollars versus somebody comes in with an eighteen wheeled dump truck, they're still paying a hundred dollars. I don't know, I'm terrible at judging the size of trucks, loads, et cetera. But can you come back to us, if, if we approve this tonight, can you come back to us with, uh, proposal, maybe doubling that for doubling the size or something along those lines?
Have you like us to get different cubic, you know, yards?
Different cubic yards and.
Levels of it?
Based on sizes of trucks. I don't expect anybody standing down there with a yardstick and measure it, but, uh, we no longer have any scales or anything down there to measure by weight, but an idea, you know, I think Greg is right in that some, I'm sure there are people that are taking advantage of that now.
Yep, so would you like to see, like, what would the high end be say for a ten wheeler loaded brush?
I, I wouldn't want, well, if we've got somebody with a small dump truck that's paying a hundred dollars, a little bigger truck, maybe two hundred dollars, but if some guy's coming in there with an eighteen wheeler, number one, we need to assure that it's actually coming from the city. And number two, uh, that might be even up to five hundred or more, but I'm guessing even if we go like a two hundred or three hundred, depending on the sizes, that would do the job. I know I paid a guy five hundred dollars to take down a tree, and if I realized he was, uh, dumping it for a hundred dollars at the landfill, we would have renegotiated what it costs to come down, so.
Any other discussion?
So I'm curious, what is the plan? Now that, now that the governor closed down the biomass plant, I mean, i- in all these municipalities are, are going through the same issue, you know, what is our plan? How do we come up with these numbers to begin with? Uh, is, is there an anticipated revenue? What's the anticipated cost to remove it? You know, I, I talked to Messina, so I worked there, I figured communities about the same size. And I was just curious what they do. So in Messina, so I get the fact that we're charging for the, the bigger stuff. So in Messina, they don't take anything over eight inches, number one, you can't even bring it there. And then, uh, for other items, to, to have a guy come in, the same guy that was doing it before, current, and, and chip a few times a year, it's about six thousand dollars a pop. You know, so that's why I get the charge, because before I was completely against it. And then it costs about another twenty thousand dollars to haul it away and bring it somewhere else. And so it's costing, you know, that, that community a lot of money. So I understand the, the charging for a fee, but, you know, I mean, did we, is there a rhyme or reason to this? What, what is our plan? What are we going to do with, with, with the logs? Do we even load it on a truck and haul it, or are we going to have it chipped? Are we going to pay somebody? I'm just wondering.
Chipped, that's our plan to have it chipped.
By a big chipper?
By, yeah, industrial chipper, which, well, we've got two boats, we're waiting for two more. We just don't want to see how much they are.
Right. In Messina, you know, when I talk to them, they're, they're looking to do that too. And, and thus my email today about, uh, you know, is there a shared services plan? Does county have one?
I did hear back from county late this afternoon, they do not, they have the same size as we want, just a small roadside.
Right, that's what Messina is.
One of the guys that we got a quote from, just, I think he just chipped Jeffrey County's pile.
Is there any market for the shipped product? Uh, where are these guys that are charging us taking it to and are?
They're, they're not thinking they're going to leave it.
I've got, I'm guessing what I'm getting at was it'd be economically feasible for us to invest in purchasing a large shipper or renting a large shipper if there's any, would it be advantageous to us to do that rather than pay this disposal fee?
There, when they chip it, they're going to leave it on site, we're just going to push it over the hill.
Is, is there a way, like, first, I have one question and then another one. Is Mr. McNamara correct, there's a grant out there that the state will pay for half of the chipper, is that anything?
I'm, I'm, now that we heard of it, we'll, we'll look into it tomorrow.
And the second one, like, I hear communities that, like, they, they chip it and they turn it into mulch and then they resell it, like, back to the, I mean, maybe that's ambitious, but, you know, is that a possibility or something we've ever talked about?
We have not talked about it.
I'm the new guy around.
Well, because before, Kearn's, as Mr. Scampaly stated, they came, they chipped it, but they took it away. That was the, the deal we had, they took it, they brought it to the biomass plant. We didn't have to pay them anything for chipping, but they got their award of the chips to the biomass plant. But since that's closed, it's, it's all new for everybody now, everybody's in the same situation.
All these communities around us are, are facing the same thing. Before, we had a contractor that took it, he got paid.
Yep.
Who bought us the biomass plant, and, uh, that's been closed, so we're all in the same situation. To be clear, Shane, this price is simply to chip it and leave it on site and we're going to push it off to the side?
Yep.
That not, not hauling it offsite or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Derek.
So I was just going to say, Counselor Dan, um, with your, when you talk to everyone else, shared services, perhaps this is something where we can reach out if the county doesn't have a, a large chipper. Perhaps we could go in with some other municipalities to buy that large chipper. Um, because we're not going to use it every single week, are we? I mean, it would be periodic with our manpower.
Or once, once a year, we could utilize it. I could bring it up at our next, uh, meeting, see if there was anybody interested. The problem, like, I think maybe with the grant too, like, grants have life expectancy on stuff, right? So the ones that are two hundred fifty thousand dollars are not, not new.
And you're not going to get the full purchase price with a grant.
No.
It's going to be highly competitive.
Seven hundred fifty to a million dollars. So one of the guys I talked to pulls his outfit in there, he's got over a million dollars invested in. To get, you know, to the product we want. But, you know, if we only bring in the small stuff, maybe we could buy a smaller one and chip, you know, if we're bringing in, you know, like you said, Messina, eight inches or below, that's something we might be able to afford, you know, people might want.
As far as the chipping, let's hypothetically say that we get into a shared service or we purchase a chipper, medium range chipper to be able to, uh, to, to, to create, um, you know, wood chips or would, I wouldn't call it fine mulch, obviously, but it would be some, some sort of mulch with the, the, the public be have access to be able to go in there and maybe take a chuck load of it out or a trailer load out and it out to use for fill at maybe small fee? You know, chuck load for twenty-five, thirty dollars or something, something to that effect for somebody to use on a property for fill somewhere along the way, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something we'd have to talk about. Um, I don't think that anything would be off the table once we kind of have a better understanding of what the material is. Um, the concern is, do we have somebody, well, one, I guess we're talking about a fee. So if there's a fee, then it's a little easier to at least offset the cost of having someone maybe filling up the trailers or trucks or et cetera. Um, otherwise, you end up with a little bit of a liability issue if you're just saying it's free and someone's coming in and that, that is a little bit more of an issue. But if there's a fee and the council's accepting of a fee, then at least that offsets, um, the man hours associated with it and then, um, it makes it a little bit more easier to control and regulate, I think. So we can look at that.
We maybe talk with Lisbon and Hubelton and, you know, look, look to possibly, I don't know if there's any grants out there, and if there is, like I said, I, I highly doubt you'd get a whole good, good amount of money for it, but anything would help, obviously, and any shared services that we have. Utilizing, uh, contractors coming in, dropping off, paying a fee, and then maybe being able to come back and, and, uh, utilize some of the, uh, product.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one question. Shane, how close are we to being full? Because I remember when I was on council, maybe two thousand fourteen, we did have DEC come in, and that's when we changed the bagging policy, because we were close to being shut down then.
They haven't been over in a few years. To, to Greg's point, if it's a three acre lot, we're, we're there, but it's depending how high they let you go. We're getting pretty close to the power lines. And then I don't know if we go too high, if it would affect the solar array, that's right next to it. So I, I, we're going to make it a point this year to call and have them over and go through it. I mean, Andrew talked about it a couple of times. Then they could tell us if we're doing anything wrong or we're doing it right.
Thank you.
Or maybe a remedy.
Yes.
Based on the conversation among council, I'm going to make a motion to table this resolution, uh, to give staff the opportunity to bring back revised fee schedule.
I second that.
Any discussion on the motion to table? Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to submit an application for up to nine million dollars through round eight of the Restore New York Communities Initiative through Empire State Development Corporation for the demolition and redevelopment of one nineteen, one thirty-five West River Street in partnership with At the Docs LLC. So.
Go ahead, please.
This is, uh, an application that would allow us to work with At the Docs LLC. Um, at our last meeting, we did entertain their request to submit a letter of intent, um, on their behalf, uh, which was submitted, the deadline for that was today at five o'clock. Um, and we had the public hearing this evening. So this kind of starts to check off the requirements for being able to submit an application. The city of Augsburg, as a municipality in New York State, is the eligible entity, and At the Docs LLC is the developer. Uh, so that's what makes this partnership eligible for the grant funding. Um, and their project is a ten million dollar project in which they would be seeking, um, an award under the special category section of the Restore New York. And they are seeking nine million dollars to, again, do demolition and redevelopment. Um, ultimately, the goal would be to convert this property into a mixed-use resort, retail with some long-term housing units as well.
Questions or comments from council? Yeah, so I think it's important to emphasize that there are different categories within Restore, that this is a special category request. Uh, whereas the one we'll act on next is describing it as a different category.
Yeah, it's the regular, normal projects.
Maybe normal. Uh, Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
And our next item of the business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to submit an application for up to seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars through round eight of Restore New York Communities Initiative through Empire State Development Corporation for the redevelopment of two oh two Ford Street in partnership with Lynn and David Levens.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Fire Chief Ken Stowe.
This is a resolution to authorize a submission of fiscal year twenty twenty-three FEMA staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, also known as SAFER.
I'll move that, second.
Questions or comments?
Could you just do a recap of that for us, please, Chief?
So this is a, uh, we'll, we'll be submitting for four firefighters, which is one hundred percent funded for three years and includes salary and benefits. There's no retention at the end of the three years.
Thank you.
This, uh, we, we, we hired the, uh, contracting firm to, to write the grants. These people do that.
That is correct, I believe the grant is already wrote.
Wonderful.
Questions or comments, others? Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a contract with Environmental Design and Research, EDR, to provide engineering services for the city's inflow and infiltration project.
Second it. Leave a brief description of this, Andrea, for the public.
This is, uh, associated with a twenty twenty-two consolidated funding grant award through, uh, Environmental Facilities Corporation through their engineering planning grant program that provided a fifty thousand dollar grant and requires a ten thousand dollar match to, uh, prepare an inflow and infiltration study, which essentially will look at where we have infiltration into our wastewater collection system. Um, and this would award it to EDR for a sum not to exceed forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of the business will also be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
The resolution establishing the minimum purchase price for surplus city-owned property and authorizing the interim city manager to hold a public auction.
I'll move that, second.
Any discussion?
A couple, couple items. One, do you, do you, do you know that, uh, any of this land is contaminated? Or not contaminated, I should say.
We do not have suspicion of contamination at any of these properties.
Uh, and then if, if somebody's house or property, as I, as I noticed one, uh, is right next to their house and they're actually using it, were they given a letter or?
That happens next.
That has been sent?
No, that happens next. Once the council approves of, uh, this resolution, if they do, um, while we are not required, we do send out notification to all property owners within one hundred feet of any of these properties. So they will receive an actual letter in the mail. In addition to the legal notice that is required.
Okay, good.
Excuse me, Andrew, what, why the hundred feet? What is the basis for one hundred feet? Costumery, is that a basis of anything? Because that seems very short.
Well, we chose to do this several years ago, again, it's not a requirement, um, and it's based off of just my recommendation, which is based off of the zoning board requirement and the New York State requirement that area variances are submitted, um, by mail to property owners within one hundred feet of the property being, requesting the variance. So that's where the dimension comes from, New York State.
Andrew, can you educate me as to, uh, how the recommended sale price is arrived at? Is that, uh, unpaid taxes? Is that assessment, does somebody do, take a look at it and say, this is a good price for this property?
So a little bit of all those things. So the price is reviewed, many of these properties have been, uh, surplus and have been auctioned in the past, so their price has been reduced. Um, we reference their assessed values, um, and then we also take into consideration this, what we do know about the property. Um, many of these do have structures, so we take into consideration. so we take into consideration what we know of the work that needs to be done to get them up to repair and we devalue the properties appropriately. So not all of these are listed at their assessed values. Many of them are less than that. Um, uh, but it's reviewed by a number of, of departments here at the city. Um, and we make a collaborative recommendation on what the price should be.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Kathy, please call the roll, please.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
And our, uh, last item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution to call for a special city council meeting on Thursday, April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P M. At City Hall, City Council Chambers, Augsburg, New York.
Someone care to introduce this?
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
And just for the public's knowledge, the purpose of this special meeting will allow city council to meet with its consultant and city manager search to review candidate applications. Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Approved.
That brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business present to council tonight?
Last, uh, meeting, Dan brought up possible revision to the, uh, code regarding the height of storage buildings. Uh, I'm just wondering if that, in the process, moved that toward the county? Andrew, you said need to go through the county. Have we done anything with that?
It's on the planning board agenda for their next regular meeting, which is on Tuesday, April second. Uh, and any proposal that they would make would then go to the county and then come to the council.
Thank you. Any other old business? Any new business that anyone likes to bring before council tonight? Brings us items to discussion. Does anyone have any items for discussion this evening? Uh, I have a couple. Um, one, um, it's important for the community to know the St. Lawrence County Prison Task Force met again last Wednesday. Representatives from St. Lawrence County Administration and Board, Town and Village Governor, St. Lawrence County I D A and the city, including Counselor Scamperey, Councilman Powers, interim city manager Andrea Smith and me. Uh, very good meeting, uh, continuing our discussions and sharing information to aid our, our communities in getting messaging to the appropriate people and bodies in Albany uh, with regards to, uh, the strengths of our respective prisons in St. Lawrence County. Um, and so I just wanted to make the public aware that, that those, those efforts are ongoing and, uh, and, uh, we hope will, will prove successful. Mike or Dan, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, just to add on to what you're saying is, is many of these facilities, um, have, have taken on a, a lot of programs. And being a recently retired member of Department of Corrections and Community Supervision, recognizing that, uh, facility closures are imminent in, in the executive budget, that, uh, we're, we're collectively working with many of these entities and, and, uh, you know, representatives from Governor and, and the local area and, and including us, uh, to advance the cause for these facilities and recognize the value that they bring, not only to the incarcerated individuals, but to this, the fine staff that work in there and both security and civilian staffs. And, uh, it's, um, it's a very, very forward-thinking, uh, group that we have. And, uh, and I concur with the mayor that, uh, things are moving somewhat nicely right now. But, uh, you know, the budgets, state budgets due April first, whether that passes then, we'll soon see. But, uh, with that being said, I think we're in a good position as far as an advocate for, uh, the two facilities in the county. Yeah, I agree. Uh, and I, and I think, uh, the task force has done a tremendous job. Certain, certain players have brought things forward. Looking at, uh, looking at what the state is interested in keeping for prisons, uh, as, as Mike mentioned, staffing levels and, uh, retention of staff. Uh, we, we talk about so many different aspects in terms of staffing. And then, uh, Mike mentioned the benefits to the incarcerated individuals. Uh, you know, I've seen on, uh, Spectrum News lately and the, the state is really pushing for education in the prisons. And we've already got that established up here. And so, uh, it's one of the finer points we're touching on when, when we bring this to our state officials to try and maintain these prisons, uh, up here in the North Country. So all the positive stuff that we, we know what the state's looking for and we're, we're trying to show that this is, this is what we have. So keep us, uh, keep us hopefully functioning here.
Thank you. The other thing I'd like to bring up, um, admitting a degree of ignorance about this, I guess, is, is just a general discussion about grants. Since our last meeting, uh, some of us and council have been approached by individuals and or business owners about their lack of knowledge about available grants to city residents and businesses. And I, I don't know, um, if that's communicated now through, uh, our webpage or through Facebook or other means. But whatever way is being, uh, conducted at this time, I think we need to do a better job. And, uh, as well as possibly considering, I know that the correct timing would be of this, that it might be worthwhile at particular date and time annually. Maybe to have a town hall meeting and invite interested citizens, interested businesses, or, you know, to, to lay out for them, you know, opportunities that might exist. Um, and, and that way, you know, um, get the word out, uh, to our community um, so that they don't feel that, uh, they might have been slighted in the process. So, uh, I'm just floating that suggestion for, for now, for something to be considered for further discussion.
I really like that idea.
Yeah, what about potentially, uh, using our website to, to list? Uh, maybe even some links to open grant processes going on right now in New York State, whether they be federal or, or state. You know, that, that business owners, except I've had some approach me as well, uh, could maybe go to and just kind of look down through. Maybe I fit in that, maybe I don't. And we give them a, a, a talking point to approach city staff or the I D A or, or somebody with, 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 with some help and maybe some guidance for starters, you know? So if we could get something like that on our website in the near future, that, that would be lovely.
Okay, any other items for discussion? Okay, so that brings us to citizen participation. And at this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have two minutes.
Yes, fair. Just a couple of concerns. Listening to, I think you had great discussions tonight on the waste pickup and stuff. Uh, one of the things I, I thought about when you were discussing that is, uh, it said, I think Shane said it was be no summer pickup? Okay, please, I can see a problem. Please do not back yourselves into a corner. All right, we'll see when festival time comes. Because if it's no, no pickup, every year, people on Fourth Street do a great job cleaning everything up. Okay, and we do pick that up. So we put that into law that there's no summer pickup. And you've almost at this table that you will pick that up for CY Festival. All right, so now we gotta be concerned about people on J Street, Knox Street, wherever that might have debris. So just, this is a point of emphasis. I think you should, you know, whether you put that date in the law or just float it, whatever. Just don't, you know, I, I hate to see us get ourselves into a corner like that. Um, second thing on the fees. Please consider, when you're, uh, coming up with fees, all right? That's an example. Say if our tax rate's nineteen dollars per thousand and it costs me as a taxpayer six dollars per thousand to run a D P W or ten dollars to run the police department. But we'll talk D P W because we're talking about trucks and labor and stuff. All right, I'm already paying for that truck and that loader and that men through my taxes. So when you consider the fees, okay? Come up with a, you know, not, not an outrageous fee for taxpayers because we're already paying for that service. Okay? Uh, one other thing is, is, uh, the two Restore New York grants that you just approved tonight. Maybe Andrew, if we get ready, we get these grants and one of the entities decides not to go through with their project, what happens to that money?
At what point do they not, do they not go for it? Do they don't submit the grant?
No, I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm asking is, is if, if one person says, all of a sudden says, you know what, I can't go through, we get the grant, all right? I can't go through with the project. So does, does the money go back to the state?
The funding is not received. This is, the Restore, the Restore program in particular, the funding is received in a rear, so after the work is completed. So if you don't do your project, then you don't get the funding.
Then you don't get it all. Okay, all right. And the SAFER grant, great idea. Uh, if we get that, does that pay for salaries of some of the new firemen we just hired?
No.
That's gonna be an additional four people?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. City clerk will recognize it on mute one person at a time and you will have two minutes.
The first individual is registered as Greg McNamara and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir.
Hi, folks. Uh, from the last time I spoke, uh, Counselor Stevenson, she had a good question. And I, I kind of understood what she said at first. When it came to the hundred-dollar charge for the waste being put out early, she said, you know, if you gotta drive the trucks and the loader and everything, go pick it up. The thing is, is the city won't pick it up, the D P W won't pick it up. They'll let it sit there. That's what they should do, in my opinion. If that's, if you, if you were gonna implement these charges, they should just sit there anyways. Because you use two dump trucks or a dump truck and a loader to go all the way across town to pick up some twigs. That's, that's nothing but a waste of money. Um, I also thought it was a, a very good idea on maybe sharing the chipper for the dump from other towns and local areas. That was a genius idea. And another good question is, is it okay to get a used chipper versus a brand-new one under the New York State grant I told you is about? Now, I'm not a grant writer, I don't know that it's for sure. But, like I said, I was just told not a week ago by the lady that oversees the dump here in Augsburg that a chipper could fifty percent would be paid for a chipper. So I don't know if it's brand-new or not. Um, I can't see how we can charge people who are bringing debris to the dump. It's always been done for free as long as it's in the city. When the city does it for their own property. And when the D P W goes around and does snow removal for businesses that are private in certain parts of the city and snow doesn't fall on any type of schedule. So when it happens, it happens and they do it. Uh, just some things to think about. And, uh, thank you for my opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else, Kathy?
The next individual is registered as Wendy Hamilton and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. Um, just to, uh, tag along on the whole grants thing, um, I have a suggestion that when these grants are announced or proposed, that the tangible benefits for the citizens of Augsburg be enunciated. I'm sure there's some kind of cost-benefit analysis that's done and maybe that can be shared so that we as citizens who are paying the salaries of the people who are writing the grants, um, so we understand what we're getting. There are, we, I think we all know what the intangible benefits are to development of the city, but sometimes it's not clear what the tangible benefits are to us. So if it means there's gonna be more, uh, property tax coming to the rolls or more sales tax, something where we can then say, ah, okay, I get it. The other thing might be to also, where there's a match involved, to indicate whether that's a bud, that's an item that's been budgeted for, what line item that might be coming from and what the probability of overrun would be and who would be responsible for that. Because sometimes we find that out after the fact that, you know, there was this huge overrun, we didn't budget enough and, you know, now we're stuck. So just some suggestions for continued transparency. And I appreciate all of the information that you do provide um, and how you do try to educate us all as you go along. So that's it.
Thank you, Wendy.
I do not see any other hands raised.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. I so move.
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Approved.
And, uh, just to note that the initial matter of being discussed today will be with consultant John Crowe, who'll be joining us. And then, secondly, there's an issue to address, uh, at the request of interim city manager Andrea Smith.